Okay, good evening, everybody. Sorry for the late start. I'm Mayor Jason Poo. It's 6:42, and I will call the regular session of the San Gabriel City Council to order. Tonight's pledge of allegiance will be led by myself. Please rise and face the flag. Right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Poo.
Here.
Vice Mayor Menchaca.
Here.
Councilmember Costanzo.
Here.
Councilmember Harrington.
Councilmember Liao.
Here.
Sorry, give us a second here.
Here.
Okay. And before we formally start, I'd just like to say a few words. We're meeting this evening under extraordinary circumstances with the break of COVID-19 and the increase in community spread, or at least the numbers of confirmed cases that we're aware of. As you can see, we are practicing social distancing. This is our first and best tool to slow the spread and flatten the curve. That way, our healthcare system will not become overwhelmed. And for all those who might be watching on YouTube or TV, we strongly, strongly, I mean, we don't just encourage you, we, I would say, it is of dire importance that we practice this social distancing. You do the personal hygiene measures that have been recommended by the counties and state and feds, you know, it's washing your hands, it's making sure that, you know, you avoid crowded places. And this is unprecedented, as far as I can, as far as I know. And so, we are doing our best to maintain as much normalcy as possible. But again, you know, I heard a comment from Supervisor Hildos Elise today, which I think is appropriate, which is, "We're standing together, but six feet apart." So, we'll all get through this together. I want to encourage everybody to stay calm. This is a temporary situation. It will pass. And I think our leaders, our public health leaders at the LA County Department of Public Health, Dr. Barbara Ferrer in particular, is doing a fantastic job. And we're trying to stay ahead of the curve. That's why we're implementing these procedures now. There's a Washington Post article that has some simulations in it of what happens, you know, in these situations if you don't practice social distancing. And that's when you have the kind of explosive exponential curve that can overwhelm a healthcare system. By doing so, we are spreading it out and flattening that curve so that frankly, then we don't have to go to, we hopefully will not have to go to full lockdown procedures and also not have to see the types of temporary quarantine shelters that are located outside of hospitals, so forth and so on, right? Those are the kinds of situations we're trying to avoid getting to right at this point in time. So with that, I want to thank also the extraordinary efforts of the staff, Mark Lazaretto, our city manager, Arminay Chaparayan, our assistant city manager and community development director, and every one of the executive team, our chiefs, Chief Harris, Chief Wallace, all the executive team members who have worked really hard and adjusted to this new normal. It definitely changes, not just by the day, but by the hour. And so, and so, we are doing our best to make sure that we're not only implementing and practicing the kinds of things that will keep the community safe and slow the spread, but then also trying to assist and support our community, both our residents and our businesses, in this time of need. So, you know, those would be some of the things that will be on our agenda for some of the days, weeks, and maybe months to come. So, sorry. With that, our city attorney has a bit of an announcement. Thank you.
Okay, this is on, good. Turning to the approval of agenda order, we have an item, a new business item that we would like to add to the agenda, which is the approval of an emergency ordinance. The Brown Act requires that when we add an agenda item, there's actually two agenda items to add, I'm sorry. First one is approval of the emergency ordinance. This is a ratification of an ordinance that was, a resolution, I'm sorry, that was signed by the city manager yesterday. The Brown Act requires that if we add an item as a need arose item to an agenda, there has to be a finding that the need to take action on the item arose after the posting of the agenda and that there's a need to take action before the next regularly scheduled meeting. This is an emergency proclamation related to the coronavirus outbreak and declaring a state of emergency. Clearly, we need to take action, and so, we're recommending that that be added as a new business item number one. In addition, we need to add as a need arose item, a safety briefing from the police, from the fire chief, Wallace, as a closed session item. And I think furthermore, well, I guess we wanted to discuss when those items would be considered in the order of the agenda. I think the expectation is that the, that the emergency resolution would be considered after the consent items. And then I think we, are we going to do the closed session at the end? Is that the intent?
That's correct. After, yeah, after, after even council comments and city manager comments.
Okay, so for that reason, then, I would recommend that when you approve the agenda, that you add those items and that, that motion includes a finding by the city council that the need to take action on those items arose subsequent to posting the agenda, or the actions arose subsequent to posting the agenda and there's a need to take action before the next meeting.
Thank you. And as I understand it, too, we will, I'm also asking the council to approve the agenda and deferring items that were previously posted on the agenda, items 7A and 7B, which are the new business items that were on the agenda, so we may focus more diligently on the COVID-19-related issues that, you know, actually are before us. So, I will move approval of the agenda order with the findings outlined by our city attorney for a need arose item. And for those people who are watching at home or don't know what that is, that's spelled N-E-E-D, space, A-R-O-S-E, as in, "The need arose," you know, after, subsequent to the posting of the agenda. So with the addition of a new business item, a need arose new business item, and the requisite findings for a ratification of the proclamation of local emergency, and also addition of the closed session at the end of the agenda after our city manager's report and council comments, and also the deferment to a later date of agendized items 7A and 7B.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion and second. Let's go to the board. Can our city clerk's office train us on how to?
Mr. Mayor, we need to have a roll call vote since we can't access the records.
We have to have a roll call vote, okay. We'll do a roll call vote. For myself, aye. Vice Mayor Menchaca?
Aye.
Councilmember Costanzo?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrington?
Aye.
Councilmember Liao?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right. Presentations, there are none. And now is public comment.
This is the time set aside for members of the public to address the city council on items of interest that are not on the agenda but are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the San Gabriel City Council. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council cannot answer any questions or take any action until such time as the matter may appear as an item on a future agenda. All public comments will be limited to a maximum of three minutes. You will receive a 30-second warning as you approach the end of your time. As a reminder, please be respectful of all speakers regardless of the position they take on any items. If you wish to address the city council, we request that you please complete a speaker's request card and hand it to the clerk. When speaking, please state your name for the record.
I'd like to thank the members of the public who are here and doing the social distancing and having the six feet between each other. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the San Gabriel City Council at this time? Okay. And city clerk, did we receive any comments that wished to be entered into the record via telephone or email?
No, sir.
Okay. Then, in that case, I will close public comment. Next item, please, which would be consent calendar, I believe.
All items listed on the consent calendar are considered routine and recommendations will be approved in one motion unless a member of the city council or audience requests separate discussion.
I make a motion to approve consent.
Okay. Second. And does this also need to be via roll call as well?
Everything's a roll call tonight.
Okay. All right. Motion and second. Mayor Poo, aye. Vice Mayor Menchaca?
Aye.
Councilmember Costanzo?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrington?
Aye.
And Councilmember Liao?
Aye.
Okay. Pro five zero. Next item, please.
New business, resolution number 20-14, ratifying the proclamation of the Director of Emergency Services concerning the existence of a local emergency. Presentation will be made by city attorney Lumio.
Good evening. We've talked a little bit about this already. This is a resolution that is confirming a resolution adopted by Mr. Lazaretto yesterday, acting as the Director of Emergency Services for the city, which is a designation he has pursuant to Section 3606 of the municipal code. The emergency declaration empowers our emergency services to take whatever action is necessary using the city's police power in order to preserve the life, health, and safety of the This is sort of a first step if we are required to take other actions. I think currently, my understanding is that we're not contemplating actions beyond the emergency actions that have already been undertaken by the County of Los Angeles. However, in the event that the city council wants to take additional actions as this situation progresses, this is a necessary first step for that. Do you have any questions? Oh, I guess I didn't explain why. I think everybody understands why. This relates to the coronavirus outbreak and the steps that might be necessary in order to prevent the spread, as the mayor eloquently spoke of earlier, the need to socially distance, to stop the propagation of the virus. And that will require, in some cases, a top-down approach from local governments to provide instruction and to try to make sure that people are coordinated in a way so that we can, as a group, try to keep this thing from spreading.
Thank you. Councilmember Costanzo?
Mr. Lumio, I just had on Section 2, Page 2 of 4, where it says, "Such determination shall be revisited by the city council no less frequently than every 60 days." Just wondered what the significance of the 60 days was. Why wasn't it 30, 45, and just?
You know, I think that is the
Standard?
This is a requirement, I think, from our municipal code, but I'd have to pull open the code to take a look, but I think that's the idea. I mean, you want to, because this potentially involves the city taking extraordinary action, you want to make sure that, that this does not last any longer than is necessary. And so, there is sort of a minimum required amount of time to revisit the issue so that you don't have an emergency that then goes on indefinitely unless it really needs to.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Harrington?
Yeah, I'd just like to know the exact powers that transfers over to the city once the emergency is declared, like what steps can staff take?
So, I've got some information on my iPad because the situation has been changing. Every time I take a look, there's a new, some new guidance. But, you know, the, I guess you can say that the standard is very broad. So, the city has broad authorization to generate regulations reasonably related to addressing the impacts of the epidemic. They have to be written, given wide publication and notice, and confirmed by the city council as soon as practicable. So, and they can be enforced through our penal and administrative mechanisms, including making certain things a misdemeanor. So examples, and it really is that broad. So you, examples, I think, we've seen from other jurisdictions, I think everybody's aware of this, prohibition on public and private gatherings over a certain number of people.
Curfew.
Yeah, curfews, mandatory closure of bars. There was also recently an executive order signed by the governor that allows us to, I'm going to say this right, but essentially create a moratorium on certain evictions is another thing we could bring forward. Again, we could be doing that immediately under the emergency powers and then have it confirmed by the city council subsequently. We can't enact any regulations that are contrary to those of the state or the county. So, we can, we can do things that are more aggressive than they're doing, we can't, we can't do things less aggressively, I guess. But really, it's that broad. Does that answer your question?
It does. I'm just concerned, obviously, if we don't have a mandate in what we're exactly conferring, like, for example, when you say we can stop gatherings, private gatherings, I'm concerned with people's civil liberties. We still haven't given those up, even in a state of emergency. And it seems like the city council is overstepping its constitutional bounds, in my opinion. How, who am I, even as a city leader, to tell people they can't gather? That's a fundamental right. So if there's a religious group that wants to get together and have a mass or something like that, we, we as council are now giving power that we don't have to our, to our staff, in my opinion. I just don't think we have that constitutional power.
Well, that's
We took an oath to uphold the constitution.
I mean, so our, our power in this way derives from government code 8634 that says that we can make and issue rules and regulations on matters reasonably related to the protection of life and liberty and property as affected by such emergency. Government code section, as you point out, 8634, is controlled by the constitution. It doesn't preempt the constitution. So, you know, perhaps, that's an argument. But, but what this allows us to do, though, now is have the tools in place so that if something comes up and it looks like we need to take action, other people are doing it, you know, the other communities are doing it. I mean, part of the problem of this, that I see of this particular emergency, is we're all affected by, obviously, the virus doesn't care about the political boundaries. So if, if it's necessary to do something in neighboring communities, it's also maybe necessary to do it here as well, if that's true. And by, and so, we may need to act quickly and with some flexibility in terms of what everybody else is doing so that we've got a uniform response. I know this is not addressing your question about the right to assembly, but I'm just trying to explain generally why we need to have this and why it's so broad. But we don't know what those things are that I'm talking about, you know? It could be some new thing. We could find something we didn't know about this virus, and we may need to, you know, we realize now that something we thought was innocuous is actually a problem, and, you know, we need to get that, we need to get that direction in place.
I think also along those lines, when we're telling businesses they can't be open, they may have a colorable Fifth Amendment takings clause. We've just taken their business from them without just compensation. I understand there's a government code.
Well, there is. Now, on that, since we're, since we're going into theoretical legal issues, I guess, the, remember that when you're talking about an actual emergency where property is being taken using the police power in order to address the emergency, there are situations where that compensation is not paid. I think the famous example, I think, was when they, the MedFly problem, when they were, I guess, eliminating crops, and they didn't pay for those crops. They, they just did it because the MedFly was deemed an emergency, and so, so there is a broad police power. It can result in, in an emergency situation. Another example, I think, from law school you might remember is the knocking down the house in order to keep the fire from spreading. You know, you don't pay for the house in that situation.
Or a threat of fire at this point. There is no fire. It's a threat of fire.
You're talking about the virus?
Yes.
Well, there is a virus.
In San Gabriel?
Well, maybe.
Well, that's what I mean. That's what I mean, it's a threat.
Yeah.
We don't have an actual case. So it's, it's a reaction to something or a protection from something that hasn't happened that we know of.
If I may, I mean, my understanding is that the declaration of, of emergency is what actually does grant the government greater powers than it would have in normal, non-emergency times. So the president's declaration of a national emergency, the governor's declaration of a statewide emergency, the county's declaration of emergency, those are already in place where each of those levels of government can then therefore take actions which would, under normal circumstances, might, might be, you know, infringement of civil liberties. But the whole point of that being an emergency means that, you know, the government can't take those actions during, during these times of emergency.
Let me just say that. This is all I'm just saying philosophically, I for one do not give up my civil liberties to anybody. So you can't, you still have to operate within the constitution or it doesn't matter. Constitution only matters if you actually enforce it in the most dire of times. And so that's why, I'm just saying constitutionally, all government powers comes from that or there are no government powers.
What I can tell you is that the, the way the resolution is drafted and the way the law works is, you will get a say on that. So if we, if we get to the point where some action is, is needed, we have to then bring it back to the city council. We're capable of setting up special meetings and emergency meetings, which is even faster than a special meeting, if necessary. So we can, and I'm sure we will not, we would pledge to bring these things back to the city council as quickly as possible, maybe even before we, we take the action, we would bring it to the city council. So you'll have a, you'll have a say on whatever it is we decide to do. Right now, we, we aren't doing anything in particular with this.
Except for authorizing the power. That's what we're doing.
We're authorizing the power.
So we are doing something that, otherwise, we wouldn't have to do anything.
Okay. So stipulated.
No, I'm just saying, because in my, in my opinion, if we are going to come back every time, if there's an issue that arises, why don't we just do that?
No. Well, let me, let me interject again because, you know, again, I've been in, I've been monitoring the whole, you know, COVID-19 situation since it began in China and even more particularly so before our Lunar New Year Festival, and making the judgment of whether or not to continue with that event. At that time, we were not at any risk at that point in time, so we decided to continue. This is a different time, you know, one month passed since then, and, and now we are dealing with this as a very real threat within our communities. We've seen what it's done in Washington, the state of Washington, in the state of New York, other places. You know, the Bay Area recently just not, you know, declared complete lockdown. We don't want to be in that same situation. I would say that being in almost daily communication with our city manager, who is the appointed, what do they call this, the emergency, Director of Emergency Services, we've taken the approach that, obviously, we've revised, we've modified all of our city services so that we can encourage the social distancing that's required to help, as I've been saying, slow the spread, flatten the curve. That's the best thing that we can do at this point in time as a community. And it's not just for us as the city of San Gabriel, it's, it's for the entire LA County And it's not that we want to reduce our services, you know, or have to wipe down our regularly touched counters every half hour, 15 minutes or half an hour after every use, I guess, or do any of the other things. You know, the way we handled our senior lunch program, I think, is a, is a good example of, rather than having that vulnerable population congregate, 40 or 50 seniors every single weekday, we're now providing frozen meals to them, which they come to pick up and heat up in their homes. That at least eliminates the situation that could enable the spread among a vulnerable population and still provides the service to those folks who could be, who are food insecure. Just let me finish. And so, the, the point I'm trying to make is, all the actions that we have taken so far in response to this are in keeping with the state and the county's guidance in terms of how we can best all do our part to, as I keep saying, slow the spread and flatten the curve. We're not taking any draconian measures. In a meeting that we had yesterday morning, the, basically, I think the theme was, "Let's try to keep things as normal as possible." Now, we may be past the point of any sense of real normalcy. I, I grant you that. But the point is to try to keep things moving along as, as well as we possibly can, help each other, support each other. You know, I keep saying, there's three impacts of this. There's the public health impact, because people are getting sick, some people are dying. There's the mental and emotional impact, you know, as we all have greater fear, anxiety, you know, you're anxious about overreach of government powers. Some people are anxious that they can't get any toilet paper at the grocery store. And that creates, you know, some, an anti-neighborly, you know, atmosphere within the community. And then the third is the economic impact. And, you know, we will look at, see what, what types of programs become available to help ease that. And I think the, not only is the federal government proposing programs, but state and, and county are as well. So in other words, it's just, this is just an authorization to allow us to be able to take all those actions which are in keeping with the best, new best practices in this particular period of time. And, you know, if somebody feels their civil rights are infringed during this period of time, then we will deal with it then. But I would say that as so far as I have seen thus far, our city staff, all departments have done an excellent job of adjusting to the situation. Again, it's changed every single day. Every single day, the past week, it's been something new, something different. So they've done an admirable job and not in a way to try to take anybody's civil liberties away, but to try to protect the community as a whole.
Can I just add one, you know, I, one thought I would have regarding this is, it's certainly possible for the city to not do this and just rely on the state or the county to issue whatever rules and guidelines they want. By, by enacting this resolution, however, you're allowing the city some measure of local control over this emergency and some of sort of a local response to the unique conditions that you've got here as opposed to next door or down the road. So this is a necessary first step for you guys to assert local control on this. It's the way I look at it.
And that's an excellent point, too. The, another point of these resolutions of emergency or proclamations of local emergency is to be able to get reimbursement for extra costs that we may have as a city in, in dealing with this situation, of which I think we are going to have many. And this way, we could actually apply directly for that reimbursement rather than needing to rely upon another agency as well. So I
There may be other legal benefits, too. Right now, as, as Councilmember Harrington points out, we're lucky to not have any known cases in the city, but it is quite possible that as this progresses, we could have people out sick and the staff could become diminished, and we may have situations related to people's, you know, skeleton crew and having to perform functions and maybe working out of class or something like that, or approvals, unusual approvals might need to be made so that we can take actions to protect the public with who we have. This, again, sort of buttresses those decisions by, by giving sort of a police power, and we can sort of overcome some bureaucratic impediments that might be preventing us from providing emergency services.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Vice Mayor Menchaca? Go ahead.
Yes, Keith? I have a couple. Just, just clarification, you might have answered a few of them, but, so my understanding is that we first had a public health declaration. It came from the World Health Organization, and then it came from the Secretary of Health and Human Services at the federal level. And we've had other, and then, of course, state and county. course, uh, state and county. So now we have, uh, in front of us, a local emergency that we're here to approve. What would be the next step after a local emergency? Are there any other declarations or resolutions that would be forthcoming after this if things get even more serious? Because as we may or may not know, I mean, uh, at some point, it's going to affect every city. We have a neighboring city on our border that has two confirmed cases. We have another one, um, one case, two cases here, just scattered. So I I know it's a matter of time and I find this to be, um, the responsible, uh, action to take. But I'm, I'm just asking, what is the next level? Is there a next level after a lo- local emergency? Is there any other declarations that would be forthcoming?
Well, the the next step, you're you're talking about for the city to take or you're talking?
For the city.
Yeah. The, for the city, the next thing would be for us to, if if we're going to promulgate emergency rules, then that would be the next step. So we would have specific, we'd have to develop specific rules. Um, and and again, some of this can be done on it in a softer way as guidelines. I noticed some of the things that we've been talking about where, uh, people have been concerned about civil liberties, you'll notice they're described as guidelines. They'll say, we recommend that you don't have meetings of more than 10 people. Are they going to come into your house and, you know, arrest your kid's birthday party because they've got 12 kids there? Probably not. Nobody's really enforcing that as a, as a misdemeanor at this point. Uh, so, uh, but anyway, it's, but to answer your question, if things get worse, that might be, I don't know if that example is one, but there there may be things that we want to promulgate as a specific rule that we want to enforce with our misdemeanor powers, but we would have to go through a process in order to do that.
Okay. So so, um, there are additional steps after this if we get to that level?
Correct.
Okay. And, um, how does that come into play? So we want to keep local control, but at the same time, you know, it takes, you know, one, um, press conference, you know, at the federal level, another one at the state, another one at the county to kind of override our local control. Is that correct?
That's right. We're playing catch-up sometimes. And again, we can't, we we, uh, can be more restrictive, we can't be less restrictive. So, uh, we, again, if we're going to do something, I imagine it would be something specific to the unique characteristics of the city that somebody at a higher level would not be, uh, coming up with a rule for. Uh, maybe a particular situation with a particular park, for example, or something, you know, I'm just.
Okay. So it has to be very unique to the cities, which you're saying?
Well, I'm just thinking of an example of why we would want to do that, right? So if we if we've got a unique, uh, business situat- culture or something or or some type of business and we want to have a special rule relating to that, that's not something they would bother to do on a higher level because it wouldn't really apply well, you know, or we've got a specific geographical situation. I I don't know. It's tough for me to spitball here and I'm not a medical expert, so I I don't have that background either. But that that's the kind of thing where this would be used particularly useful, I think, as opposed to just waiting for somebody at a higher level to to say something.
Okay. Yeah, because this is all, I think it's new to everyone, but, uh, you know, my, um, priority is to protect our residents and, uh, whatever it takes, um, you know, we should be there, uh, in line, um, trying to handle this, this crisis. And if this is an important step, then I think we should move forward with it.
You know, maybe, maybe an example, uh, that comes to mind as I'm thinking here is maybe you've got a situation with, uh, hoarding of resources. Uh, things are not being spread around the way they need to be because of something that that seems like an improper action and and that might be the kind of thing in an emergency situation that for the good of the community, you might need to address.
Okay. But but whatever, let's say it's a hoarding situation, then the city manager now has the authority and you would come back and, uh, we would just ratify it?
Or yes, or not, I suppose.
Or not, yes.
But understand that before that we could take action on something that would be, uh, like a quasi-criminal or administrative thing, we would have to still promulgate the rule in writing and disseminate the rule. So this is not going to be whatever, you know, Mark decides he wants to do in the middle of the night.
He's not king.
Yeah. So so realistically, I imagine that if we're talking about something where we're going to write people citations, we would be bringing it back.
That's correct. As staff, the reason we're looking at this is in addition to the liability and the reimbursement issues that Mr. Lemieux talked about, we would foresee only, um, enforcing things like civil unrest or other things that are happening in the city. Everything else, we're not going to be the medical experts. We're not going to be best practices for containing the COVID-19 virus. So we will be relying on, uh, Department of Public Health and the state and the federal government for those best practices.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Councilmember Lyle.
Thank you. Um, Keith, I just have a question because, uh, you know, Governor already announced the state of emergency maybe a week ago and then county also announced that. There are differences. For instance, for restaurants, in the beginning, Governor says, oh, well, uh, yeah, you could allow, uh, customer coming to the restaurant within, you know, the spacing six feet apart. Uh, and so he suggests, well, maybe you remove some of the tables and it won't be crowded. But the county says, well, no, and and the city of LA also announced, no more dining in except takeout orders.
Right.
So I was waiting all day for Governor to announce that and so he did, you know, this afternoon. And so, well, it's good because I don't know what to tell our restaurant owners, you know, and they have to, uh, open, uh, for certain customer or shut it down just for takeout. But now we got the answer is for takeout only. But the problem, problem was this small gathering, okay? Because county, I believe, they said, uh, within, um, 50 maximum of the occupation, uh, in a room like this. And, but Governor says, well, use your common sense. So what is the common sense?
Um, well, I, I, if you're asking me, how do we sort between these contradictory messages? I guess the answer is that, as I mentioned, the local governments can be more restrictive. So it's going to be the most restrictive rule is the one that governs in a particular jurisdiction. So you, in this case, and the examples you gave, I think that's the county rules currently for for restaurants in in San Gabriel. You guys could be, I, I know you have no interest in doing this, but you could be more restrictive. You could say no takeout for some reason, you know. I, again, not a recommendation, I'm just pointing out, and then that would be the rule in San Gabriel.
Okay. Well, actually, yeah, the restaurant business is already taking care of only, uh, takeout only. But the problem is for future, uh, for instance, um, nonprofits, uh, they want a meeting and, you know, is it allowed, uh, to hold a meeting for, uh, up to 50 people or up to 10 people? You know, some even suggest, uh, no more than 10 people. So what is San Gabriel's guideline? Is under 10 or under 50?
Well, I think that the 10 number came as a, a, a federal guideline, but I don't think that's enforceable as a, as a law. This is more of a suggestion.
For vulnerable populations.
Yeah.
And no, no gatherings period of over 50.
Um, so at present.
And that's all assuming you can do the social distancing of six feet.
Yeah, that that's correct. So, but again, that doesn't necessarily pertain to what we're doing tonight because we're not, we're not considering those things tonight.
Let me, and let me just say, too, with respect to enforcement, I think we're all still trying to figure it out at every level. I mean, I don't think anybody, it was all uncharted territory, it's all new. Um, but rather than appeal to, you know, appeal to using the stick that we could impose fines, we could, you know, issue misdemeanors, all that is actually true. But I would rather appeal to the community as a whole's sense of social responsibility. This is all, all these things are things that we all need to do so that as a, community as a whole, we can get through this without having to go to the same procedures that Wuhan, China did, that Italy is doing now, that, again, Bay Area, Washington, New York, you know, one area and New York State. We don't want to be there, right? And we don't want our vulnerable populations to to get sick, seriously ill, or even die. Um, so that is, uh, that's the whole purpose of of these measures. And and again, you know, I would use that same sense of social responsibility to appeal to our businesses and, you know, especially our restaurants, our boba shops, every, every place that serves food or or drinks that, that, uh, you know, we know they have been suffering even since mid-January, even since this was just, you know, more mostly an issue in mainland China. But, um, that's why I personally, and I think all of us, can encourage our community members to order takeout, order delivery, um, so that we can continue to support small businesses while we are all still staying safe and practicing the social distancing. Um, and it would be, and I think, you know, Vice Member Chaka used the word responsible thing. It's the responsible thing to do, um, for our businesses as well. You know, there are some, I, somebody, uh, sent me a message about a business in South Pasadena that was not complying. They were just, you know, or, and there are some, uh, reports of bars or restaurants, they're just gonna, they're gonna flaunt it and and have a party. Well, you know, we may or may not be there on the doorstep, you know, with the police or anything like that to to enforce it. But I would say that that is extremely irresponsible to do right now. You're endangering not only the people who are there gathered together, but everybody else who comes into contact with all of those people. So that's, I think, more the, it's more of a moral message at this point in time. And this gives us the legal authority, as our city attorney have said, to institute any kind of local measures that are, you know, more restrictive than what has already been promulgated by the county and the state. Um, but, uh, at the same time, you know, we're, it, it, this is, this is really about all of us trying to do our part to keep the community as a whole safe and healthy. Councilmember Costanza.
Thank you, Mayor Pooz. So just so I'm clear, because we're all getting our phones, you know, everybody's calling. So what we're saying as of today, that restaurants, unless they're only doing takeout, they cannot have customers inside the restaurant.
I believe that's the order from the county of Los Angeles.
And how are we getting this out to our multitude of restaurants within the city? Because many are very confused. And also what I'm finding very confusing on a national, state, county, city level, everybody has a different time. Some are saying 14 days, 15 days. I think the governor said two damn months. So I just want to be clear on the timing so everybody understands, you know, what they have to prepare for.
I don't, I don't want to make light of a very serious issue, but Mayor Garcetti indicated on his order that 12:00 PM on March the 31st is when bars and restaurants can open again. So that's illustrative of your point that there, how does anybody know? We've canceled all of our programming through our community services department through April 30th so that we don't have any mix-ups and people aren't checking our website for the next 60 days to see when we're going to open. For the restaurants, um, everybody is generally saying 14 days and then adding a little bit of time for that, for a period for incubation to happen and then those cases to come out and then be worked through. But I also say that every information that I read, every piece of information that I read, says that this changes daily. And so these are guidelines and they'll be revisited very often. In our website, we have the most up-to-date information that we can have available. We have gotten that out to our business community, those who have email addresses on file with us, which is about 60% of our business community. And we're trying to get it out through social media and other channels as well. And I would look to the five of you and your networks to help us with that information as well. Um, and we are providing links to those most reputable sources, the ones that are monitored and updated regularly. And I would say that the best bet is to watch the LA County Department of Public Health, because they're on the cutting edge and those are the regulations that we're following, and the, uh, CDC. Those are the two most pertinent sources to, uh, San Gabriel and what we're doing these days. So I can't tell you whether it will be March the 31st. That's the date that everybody is using. But I would bet it's going to be, uh, longer than that until we see the curve flattened enough and and starting down to where they're saying it's okay to loosen up restrictions a little bit.
Thank you. And I think many of it, excuse me, I think many of us are calling in to the county on those, um, elected official conversations. And so I truly appreciate that. I also want to commend you, Mark, our city staff, our emergency personnel, because you guys have been on top of this the whole time, protecting us and and preventing or minimizing, minimalizing the effects that it could have on San Gabriel. So I congratulate you. Um, I want to encourage you as a city manager to continue to keep us, the city council, involved in all the, you know, as many conversations as you can. This is not a one-person decision, even though you have that ability. But I think in order for us to be effective, that it has to be all five of us. Thank you.
Absolutely. And I can assure you all that we would not take any draconian measures without involving the council. All of our measures will be either something that needs to be taken immediately because of a pressing situation or something that we bring to the full council for a discussion.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, uh, Mark. I just want to say you are doing such a great job. But I also, I, you know, I check all the restaurants in the city of San Gabriel. Most of, most of them stay open. They will take out orders. However, there are three major, uh, restaurants being closed. They close by themselves. Uh, it's not from our directions. But, uh, there are two most popular in San Gabriel, uh, the Five Stars and also the, uh, it's called Shanghai Number One. Both of them valuable, but another one is on Last Tuna's. It's a small one. But however, they close the, uh, business until May 1st. So it's a one and a half month, uh, closing because they figure out if they don't make enough, uh, revenue and they have still paying the rent and hiring the, all the employees. So it's, for them, it's, you know, it's just too much loss. Uh, but however, I try to tell them to stay open, try to apply for SBA loan, uh, especially right now, the interest rate is low and they can qualify, uh, for, uh, for 3.75 for business, 2.75 for nonprofit, and it's 30 years amortization. And also, you can borrow up to $2 million. So, you know, for this emergency crisis, you can, uh, ask for the government, the Small Businesses Administration for help.
I would echo all of those sentiments. Uh, we are trying to do everything we can to help our businesses be creative. We're trying to, uh, encourage them to do online, to have different menus, to to work on delivery options. But there are several restaurants that have taken that voluntary step. I believe Golden Deli is another that has completely closed down and just chosen to, rather than ride it out, to close and to open back up when things, uh, normalize. The devastating effects, though, I'm afraid, will be felt in our city for very many months to come with all of those employees. I mean, they're able to apply for unemployment and other benefits more quickly, but we're not going to see the effects, um, fully turn around for several months.
So I didn't mention Golden Deli because they only closed two weeks, so opened up April 2nd, so.
Right. So, uh, since City of LA's order is, uh, relatively less restrictive, we will all be at a bar in LA at 12:01 PM on March 31st, waiting for our, our own restaurants and and bars to open at, uh, 12:01 AM the following day. Um, in any case, um, let's say this, I think that, you know, we would not take any action that is more restrictive than the county, um, without full council approval, pre-approval. Um, and, uh.
Say that in the resolution?
Do you want to add that to the resolution? Um.
The only reason I say that is if, if we're going to declare emergency and it's just for funding purposes, I'm all for that. But if we're just deferring powers, I'm not for that.
Okay. Personally, I don't want to tie our hands. I would, uh, so it's, this is not only maybe just an ideological difference, but I think also, as our city attorney was saying, if there's something San Gabriel-specific that we wanted or needed to do in order to enforce the social distancing rules or whatever it is, um, and it's really just germane to San Gabriel, I, I would, I wouldn't want to tie our own hands and not be able to do that action if it were just not necessarily more restrictive, but just different or, you know, an alternative means of doing something that the county is already, um, asking us to do or directing us to do. asking us to do or directing us to do. So that's why I think I would disfavor that.
Well, I think just me personally, I can't speak to the rest of the council, but I'd be willing to meet, if it's an actual emergency, it's something we need to do, I'm willing to meet it, whatever it is. Just because I think it is that important. I do value our constitutional rights, and I think we as council members should take responsibility for that and not defer to staff.
Okay. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, can I give two examples of how that might be used and that aren't, I don't think the concerns that some of the council might have? We had a call early this morning from the hospital, and they were looking for an enclosed tent that they could use as a way to test patients or triage patients who are coming in. It's preventative, I don't want to scare anybody, it's not something that they're in a position at now where they need to be using it and that there's not beds or rooms or anything in the hospital. But like us, they're looking down the road. And so they asked us, and all of the hospitals in Alhambra Medical Center, their line are doing the same thing. And so they asked us about a tent, and we were fortunately able to help them and also point them to a couple of places they could get it if the size that we had wasn't available. But that's an instance where we could get a call one morning where they could have enough patients, and we might need to use either purchasing powers beyond what my abilities are in the code and be able to buy something, or heaven forbid, we have to go to a Home Depot and get something and use those kinds of powers. That's one example that I hope we don't have to use. The other would be if there was a situation, like we're talking about hoarding, and one of our, excuse me, supermarkets or one of our stores, and we had a situation of civil unrest and we needed to clear an area. As you said, we don't have the right to do that, and I hope it doesn't come to that point, but that's not a situation where we would be able to call a council together.
You can't clear civil unrest? I thought our police could do that without a declaration of emergency.
We can, but under certain circumstances. We need that flexibility now, and I need to tell you that that's something that we, those kinds of circumstances. Or in the middle of the night, if we need to have a curfew or something like that in San Gabriel-specific. But the one I'm more concerned about is purchasing and if there was something to come up. The county's asking us to look for facilities that are large enough to be able to hold folks, to quarantine them, if that's where we come. Again, I don't want to scare anybody, but that's the kind of thing we're looking at. So could we use our powers to do that kind of thing? I would hope we'd have time to get council together and have a conversation, but if we can't, I don't want to have us handcuffed.
In that case, what would happen if you made the decision, they start putting people there, and the council says no? I mean, just into that scenario. That's exactly why I want the council involved, because then there'd be blowback to the council for our staff doing something maybe we didn't agree with.
I think there has to be a certain level of trust. And I would also say that...
If the council gets sick.
I'd also say that some of the things that Mark's talking about here are very real, and we are planning for, you know, any contingency, any possibility, or as many as we can foresee. Again, we don't want to be in the lockdown situation that we see other communities in. And the point is to do everything we can to sort of keep us from that, from taking even more civil liberties away, if you need to think of it that way. Mr. City Attorney?
I think...
And then I'm calling the question.
Okay. I think the most likely uses of this will be something very prosaic, like I was giving the example of skeleton number of employees here because other people are homesick. Now we have to have somebody do a minor thing, but it's out of their classification. Normally, that would be a problem because it's a state of emergency, the city manager could just have it done. It doesn't seem like we'd want to have everyone come down for that as a discussion. We just want to do it. It's something that needs to get done right away. That's an easy example of something very mundane. Now, the other extreme example is if this progresses, it's not impossible to think that a quorum of the city council may not be available for one reason or another. Either they're sick, or they've got a loved one sick, or they're someplace else, they can't get here, we're all under lockdown orders. I mean, it can get, you know, you can spin out some nightmarish scenarios, and in that situation, you need to have somebody who's empowered to take action for the city without having to bring everything back to you guys every time, or we're going to have a real problem.
Very good point. I personally don't want to be the logjam or the bottleneck, you know, in taking an action that could have saved lives or could have prevented people from getting sick or whatever it might be. So with that, I'm calling the question. I move approval of resolution number 20-14, resolution of the city council of the city of San Gabriel, California ratifying the proclamation of the Director of Emergency Services concerning the existence of a local emergency.
Second.
Okay, motion second, roll call vote. Myself, aye. Vice Mayor Manchaca?
Aye.
Councilmember Liao?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrington?
Aye.
Okay, Councilmember Costanzo?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Next, we have public comment.
Consent, council.
No, we've done the consent.
All right. Oh, we did that, sorry.
Comments are limited to three minutes. If you wish to address the city council, we request that you please complete a speaker's request card and hand it to the clerk. When speaking, please state your name for the record.
All right. Is there any member of the public who wishes to address the San Gabriel City Council? Seeing none, I will close public comment. City managers report, none. Council comments and conference meeting reports, Councilmember Harrington?
Nothing tonight.
Councilmember Costanzo?
I just want to say how proud I am of, again, city staff in this community. As Mayor Poo pointed out, you know, we come together but six feet apart. I think we're doing a tremendous job in trying to lessen the effects of this, and I'm just very grateful to be a part of this great team. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Costanzo. Councilmember Liao?
Yeah, I just worry about the seniors, you know, because they are isolated and with all these bad news on TV, and I was worried their mental situation. So there is a help number, okay? I hope it's a hotline. It's 1-800-854-7771. Let me repeat that number again, it's 1-800-854-7771. So, yeah, if you know any seniors that being isolated and with certain showing of the mental stress, or, you know, if you think that person need help, just call that number, and that's the county mental health department, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Liao. Vice Mayor Manchaca?
Yes, I too wanted to take a moment just to thank the staff. It is amazing, we are unprecedented at times, and the things that are taking place are changing from, you know, in the morning, we're going one direction, in the evening, we have another direction. And so I just wanted to applaud the efforts of staff. I do worry because there's just so much going on, and we do have limited resources. So I hope when we have our next meeting, if there is additional resources you need, please let us know, because again, our top priority should be public safety. Just want to encourage everyone to stay informed, get the facts. There's just too much information out there that's inaccurate. Take the preventive measures and try to help others when you can. I know, just little things, I'm just so impressed with this community, just seeing how everyone is really trying to come together and keeping calm, and, but also helping especially our senior population. And it could just be little things, picking up some groceries for them and making sure you clean it real well before you put it on their doorstep. That's what I did. But so, please try to help others, and even people with small children really need assistance, families who suddenly don't have childcare. Just, our lives have just changed tremendously, and really, we don't know for how long. I think this morning, the president mentioned July or August, so again, it's just constantly changing. But thank you to the staff, thank you to my colleagues. You know, we'll get through this, this shall pass, and that's all for now.
Thank you. I will just like to piggyback on that and highlight the stories of, from the community of people who have offered to help each other, people going to neighbors' homes or calling, maybe calling first, saying, hey, do you need any help? Folks who are seniors who might also have a bit of a disability, have difficulty moving around. And we have seen a number of those types of stories, and I would encourage more people to do that, to check in on each other. That not only can help in a real sense of helping to get food or groceries to somebody who's in isolation and maybe doesn't have some other support network, but also the contact provides that kind of mental and emotional support that so many of us, you know, we all, we all are in need of that kind of support these days. I also want to touch upon the program that Councilmember Liao mentioned with the SBA. That is, they are apparently currently accepting applications. I will also note, though, I have heard that there is a state relief package on the way that might also be able to provide even lower interest rate loans. Now, it hasn't been adopted yet, but I think that there's numerous different programs of relief, and we have, staff has been talking about making sure that our business community is aware of all of their options, what they can, all the different things that they can do. And as they become more concrete and available, we will do whatever we can to help our small business community in particular get through this difficult period. Because if businesses close permanently, people lose their jobs, those people who lost their jobs cannot then buy groceries or pay rent, they may end up housing insecure, food insecure, or on the street. You know, there's a whole ripple effect of that that we are trying to prevent, and I think that is a huge, a huge issue that we will also have to deal with. And I want to also thank many members of the community too for staying calm, even though we do see people who are panicking. There is no need to panic buy or to hoard, okay? Our supply chains and infrastructure are strong. We're not at risk at this moment of losing our water supply, for example. Now, in the event of a fairly big earthquake, that might happen. So is it a good idea to maybe have a certain amount of bottled water on hand? Sure, maybe, you know, a couple of weeks' worth, but there is no need to panic buy or hoard any of these kinds of items. Even food, you know, food, you can have like a week, two weeks' worth in your house, and that's fine, because grocery stores are not closed, and they will restock, you know, even though there's a lot of things that are gone right now, they will be restocking this week. Some stores get their deliveries on Wednesday morning, some are on other days, or different, you know, different suppliers come on different dates. But, you know, this is, we're basically just in like the first week of this. Maybe it's day, I will say day three of real, really serious measures where now, you know, we force businesses to close and so forth. So we'll settle into a new normal, and we, and once that's the case, you know, I keep saying, you know, we could all just view this almost as a community-wide staycation. And, you know, we'll continue, you know, another thing that's important for us is continuity of operations. We'll continue our essential services, especially public safety, but everything else is reduced. Please go to our city website to see how our services have been changed. Public facilities are closed except by appointment only at this point in time. And that's not only to, again, it's about slowing the spread, flattening the curve, protection of the community at large, and also protection of our employees and staff so that, you know, we don't have that situation that our city attorney mentioned that could, you know, is a possibility of a lot of people being out sick, then we would be really challenged to maintain that continuity of operations. So with that, thank you all for your cooperation this evening, and under extraordinary circumstances, my colleagues here on the council, you know, it's, it is not normal for us to be sitting like this. But, you know, as we keep saying, we will get through this. It's temporary, and, you know, I think we will get through this together. So with that, we'll take a five-minute recess, and then we will re-adjourn in closed session in conference room A. Thank you.
So we can, we can, we can, we can.
Right.
We're covered by that.
By state or by county?
That's, well, did the county do a county monitor?
Yeah.
So we, should follow state?